Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Southfield Regular Meeting being held on Monday, October 18th at 6:00 PM via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Present.
Brightwell?
Here.
Cruz? Frazier?
Here.
Haskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Madam President, you do have a form and excuse, Councilwoman Cruz.
Thank you. I'll now say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, Council, we do not have any presentations, but we do have some mayoral appointments. Mayor Cyver?
Good evening, uh, Council. Uh, this evening, I would, um, would like to consideration for three appointments, um, well, actually two reappointments and an appointment. First of all, I'm requesting that you appoint our city assessor, Justin Brabowski, to the Southfield Joint LDFA Authority. It's extremely valuable for the authority to have a city assessor on it. And for years, our former assessor, Mike Bradcliffe, um, was a member of this board. Secondly, I'm asking for, uh, the reappointment to the Planning Commission of, uh, two planning commissioners who've done an outstanding job. Uh, and I'd like to have their terms removed, Jeremy Griffiths and Robert Willis. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Council?
Madam Chair, this is Councilwoman Brightwell.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that we appoint the individuals identified, the appointments and the reappointments as identified by the mayor.
Support Councilman Cruz.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to accept the appointment of, uh, Justin Brabowski for the Joint LDFA Authority. The reappointment to the Planning Commission of both Jeremy Griffiths and Robert Willis. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. We have consent agenda items A through H. Council, is there any items that you would like to have pulled for discussion or otherwise?
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, I would like to pull, uh, item E for discussion.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Uh, Council, I will entertain a motions for items A through D, F through H.
This is Councilwoman Mandelbaum?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Council items A through D and F through H.
Support Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of consent agenda items A, B, C, D, F, G, and H. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you. And now, item E?
Uh, yes. Uh, item E, uh, is an issue where we, uh, originally took a bid on replacing the doors. And the contractor that won the bid could not complete the, uh, the job as it was bid. Uh, so the resolution is that we, uh, rescind the bid on that contractor and accept the bid that was rebid on the new contractor. Uh, the reason I brought it up was, I think it's two separate issues that we should, we should really have a vote on, one, rescinding the original bid, and then the second one, uh, to accept the second bid. Just to keep matters straight, so in the future, it doesn't get confused of what we were trying to do.
Thank you for that, and I, I agree. Uh, would we have to rewrite the, um...
I think with a little imagination, we can make it, make it work as it's written.
Okay. But I would like to entertain two separate motions. One would be, the first one would be to rescind the original bid. And I'd like a motion on that. And then the second would be to accept the new bid as presented. So, Council?
Uh, Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, I would offer a, a motion to rescind the bid of the first contractor, and I can't remember his name.
Stanley.
Stanley, okay. Uh, and, uh, I'll rescind that bid.
I support that.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Frazier, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to rescind the original bid from the Stanley Company? Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Um, question, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time pulling the actual item up, um, on my tablet. The, the previous bid, did they do any work? Uh, didn't they do part of the work downstairs?
I'll defer to John McReno on that.
I guess my question is...
I'm sorry, Council President, actually, we awarded two separate jobs. We awarded the electronic doors at the ice arena and the lower doors at the parking structure. The ice arena was completed, the other half was not, so you're correct. Councilwoman, we would only be rejecting hats for the bid because they did fulfill half the contract.
But did they do any work on the lower level pavilion doors?
No, they did not.
Okay. So, I guess how do we, how do we retract that bid if there were two in one? Or were there two separate bids?
We're just rescinding the portion for the doors for the lower level.
Okay.
I would amend my motion to, uh, rescind the portion of the original contract that applies to the doors on the lower level of the parking, parking lot.
Yeah, I support.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, or is that good for you, Councilwoman Gray?
Um, yes, it does answer the question, but it's hard when I, I don't have the previous bid in front of me, so, um, yes and no. So...
Okay. Well, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Frazier to rescind the original order for the lower level only, and it's supported by Councilman Brightwell. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Frazier?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
No.
Brightwell?
Yes.
And Cruz?
Yes.
Okay. And now for the second half?
Uh, Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we accept the bid, the second bid, for replacing the doors in the lower level of the parking structure. Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Frazier, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the current bid for the lower level work as being presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Frazier?
Thank you. Uh, next, we have, we're gonna take out an order due to, uh, for tonight only. We're gonna move our ordinances up before the public hearing, only because we have, uh, some special requests for us to do so by, uh, some people in the public. Uh, so we're gonna go to the ordinances section, and Council, I'll ask that we would enact ordinance number 1744. Uh, Terry, did you wanna talk a little bit about it before we do it, or...
Uh, this is, um, these two enactments have already been introduced and approved by Council.
Okay.
So it's just the perfunctory, um, act of enacting these ordinances at this time.
Okay.
Madam Chair, um, I move that we enact ordinance number 1744, which is a rezoning request.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved, it's been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier, to enact ordinance number 1744, a rezoning request with the overlay Development District Development Agreement of Mr. Hassan Jawad, uh, representing Middle Point Investment Group LLC. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Frazier?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a, uh, another request to enact ordinance number 1745, which is, which is the Council-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Brightwell again. I had moved to enact ordinance 1745, which is the Council-initiated zoning ordinance.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to enact ordinance number 1745, which is the Council-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
And Haskins?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you for allowing me to move that before the public hearing.
And Madam President, just for, uh, public consumption, that was a request with the, um, for the, from the ADA community to be, for that to be moved, since we're meeting virtually, they had to get additional help with the meeting.
Yes, thank you so much. Uh, next, we have our public hearing, and, uh, this is a presentation of the American Recovery Funds. And this is to, uh, more, a public hearing, and we're opening this up for public comments. It's really a mechanism to gather more, uh, public information. So, uh, that's why we're having this to, tonight. Uh, Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, thank you, um, Madam Chair. Many of you may be aware of the American Recovery Funds, or ARF. Uh, this is part of the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, provide eligible governments with a substantial infusion of resources to meet pandemic response needs and to rebuild a stronger, more equitable economy as the country recovers. Within the categories of eligible uses, recipients have broad flexibility, decide how best to use these funding to meet the needs of their community. There are five major categories, I'm gonna take a moment to go through. Um, no particular order, but the first, uh, is support public health expenditures by funding COVID-19 mitigation efforts, medical expenses, behavioral healthcare, and certain public health and safety staff. Second category is to address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, including economic harms to workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries, and the public sector. The third category of eligible uses includes replacing lost public sector revenue, using this funding to provide government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue experienced due to the pandemic. Fourth is to provide premium pay for essential workers, offering additional support to those who have borne and will bear the greatest health risk because of their service in critical infrastructure sectors. And finally, to invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, making necessary investments to improve access to clean drinking water, support, support vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, and to expand access to broadband internet. Next slide. This is a flow chart. We are at the very beginning stages. I believe there's up to three years to, um, to identify and expend these funds. But, um, this is in the, the very initial public input stage. The Planning Commission held two study meetings. Um, various departments made presentations on September 1st and September 8th. Public comments were also solicited online using the Master Plan Platform from September 1st through September 22nd. Then the Planning Commission held a public hearing and, and made a recommendation to City Council on the, on the 22nd to continue the public input. Tonight, Council is holding further public comments on the various eligible uses of the ARF, and then will pass these public comments on to a steering committee for a more detailed review and recommendation back to Council at a later date. Council will continue to take public input to study this, uh, have an additional public comment, uh, on recommended projects once they've been whittled down, and to review the findings of the steering committee and then make a final approval. Next slide. So the City of Southfield, um, was notified that it's eligible for approximately $9.8 million. Total request by city departments to date is over $23 million. I'm gonna give a high-level overview of the various departments and what their requests are. I've provided the additional background in, in your packets. And there may be other, um, requests from other agencies. And as Mr. Zorn has indicated, the state may have some additional funding. This is in the very preliminary stages, but, uh, this is what we have to date. Next slide. Uh, so the business development, um, has requested approximately $750,000 for the Southfield Entrepreneur Evolution Lab, creation of, of a program consisting of economic incentives, business coaches, educational opportunities, and to help small cottage industries to grow their businesses. Next slide. Cable 15 is requesting replacement of older Mac editors, playback and storage servers, switchers, studio lights and lighting board, teleprompter cameras, and various other, um, electronic equipment. This will allow for broader streaming audience the ability to edit off-site, 21st century lighting, and better video on-demand services to communicate with the public. Their request is just under half a million, $500,000. Next slide. Code Enforcement is looking for sanitary sewer connection grant and hardship assistance to homeowners due to failing septic systems. Um, they're also requesting additional funds to help with sidewalks no removal. Their total request is approximately $130,000. Next slide. Fire Department is, uh, looking for funds for protective personal structural and proximity firefighting equipment, um, to have higher volumes of breathing air for firefighters, commercial generators, and to replace Stations 1 and Stations 3. Their total request is $13.5 million. Next slide. Given Resources is looking for office renovations and office furniture to maintain social distancing, purchasing of 10 iPad tablets to facilitate remote meeting attendance. Their request is approximately $37,000. Next slide. The library is looking for internet hotspots for lending, PPEs for public use, and outdoor space re, um, purposing of library patio, children's garden, and exterior walkway. Their total request is $225,000. Next slide. Parks and Recreation is looking for, uh, funding for multiple projects, including the purchasing of a mobile stage, movie screen, and sound system, replacement of playground structures at six parks, development at Miller and Sims Parks, tennis courts, uh, repair at the Civic Center, interpretive trail system at Lincoln Woods, uh, help fund the Beachwoods Master Plan, Civic Center restrooms, Evergreen Hill, golf path replacement and improvements, Inglewood Park restroom roof replacement, Civic Center Arena Pavilion and the Berg renovations, at a total request of $2.1 million. Next slide. And they, this is just some details on, on their various projects. Next slide. Planning is, uh, requesting funding to increase accessibility, uh, for physical and mental health well-being, provide social equity and access to jobs, healthcare, education, and healthy food choices by, uh, filling in gaps in our sidewalk system, extending our shared use pathway, and providing additional, uh, enhancements at bus stops. Our total request is $2.275 million. Next slide. And, uh, this is based on previous, uh, plans and studies and input through the Master Plan that had been presented to Council on major gaps in our pathway system. Next slide. Public Works, uh, under their stormwater management, uh, are requesting dedicated funding source to maintain their aging stormwater infrastructure. Their request is approximately a quarter million dollars. Next slide. Public Works is also looking for renovation of their office space to provide safer and improved work environment and to increase work efficiencies. Their total request is about $775,000. Next slide. Technology Services is looking for funding to improve their INET, replace their firewall, to allow for WebEx room kits for virtual meetings, to assist the police with fleet laptops and docking stations. Their total request is $2.5 million. Next slide. The Treasurer is looking for hazard pay for eight Treasury employees, carpeting replacement. Their request is $151,000. Next slide. So again, um, the City of Southfield is eligible for approximately $9.8 million under the five categories that, uh, we did a high-level review of. Uh, this is early on in our, our discussion. I believe we have up until 2024 to spend the funding. I also believe that funding can only go back to March of this year, so it, it would be any reimbursements for, or costs of March 2021 and forward. With that, um, I, I suggest that the Council open the public hearing, and afterwards, uh, myself, uh, Mr. Austin, Mr. Zorn will be happy to answer any questions that the Council may have. It is not our intent to make any decisions tonight, but just to continue receiving public input. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for clarifying everything for us. This is a public hearing for the American Recovery Funds discussion. I now declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone that wishes to speak to this topic, would you please push star 3 to be recognized by the clerk?
We have one person, we have a couple people first, uh, I believe it's Fred Bunker.
Hello?
Good evening.
Yes, uh, my name's Fred Bunker, 24201 Garner. I've been, been watching the deterioration due to the apparent, uh, donation of boulders at Carpenter Lake and the use of commercial heavy-duty equipment to tear the parking lot apart. I'm wondering, without a master plan, can the city attend to routine maintenance? As well as this, the confirmation of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, the, the Council's decision to confirm the approval of a solution for the deer that keep getting hit by cars, wounded. They call animal control, they send a police officer out, he shoots the deer in the head. I think we need to do more than come up with a resolution to adopt a solution. It's like, what has Mr. Frazier and his so-called Wildlife Council been doing? Instead of coming up with a solution, they've come up with a resolution to adopt a solution. Currently, they're, you're gonna use police officers and their pistols to shoot the deer through the head if they're wounded. Alternatively, drag them off the road by the DPW, unceremoniously throw them in a piece of construction equipment and haul them away. I don't think an unelected councilman like Mr. Frazier should be in charge of this kind of, uh, intentional dereliction of, uh, solution. These deer are starving, and they're in overdrive to create more deer because all of the green space is being paved over as Mr. Frazier and Mr. Cyver voted to install sewers that created a 13-acre parking lot across the street from me that only helps flood more of Northwest Detroit. Like all of these sewer projects and master plans, none of them take into account the vulnerability of Wayne County. You gotta stop building parking lots. That's the cause of the flooding. The millions of dollars in flooding in Wayne County is specifically due to the parking lots that Mr. Frazier, Mr. Cyver have built in the past 20 years with ignorance, a forethought. Let's stop being stupid and start remembering that the water in North America flows south. If you don't stop and start considering communities, everybody will know that the SFLD is, is...
Mr. Bunker, your time is up. I'm sorry.
I know. My time is up. My property is flooding. What can we do?
Thank you for your comments.
We need to make a plan to help the residents, not to help non-residents get tax breaks.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else on the phone? Yes. Call the number four.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening to Council, to the mayor, and all the other city staff participating in this meeting. This is Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is still 248-346-0439. You know, I saw on the presentation, and Terry Crowe, thank you for moving the, the, uh, the gray box off of the actual information on the chart and moving it up to the top because I was able to see it a little bit better. But, um, I wanted to ask a question about the broadband and, and putting the broadband with the infra- and, and putting the broadband with the infrastructure as it relates to sewers and other water projects. Are we talking about broadband for some of the senior centers? Or senior housing that we have for those people that can't afford to pay for broadband? Are we talking about broadband with the schools? Are we talking about broadband in the library? I was hoping to get a little bit more clarification in reference to what specifically about broadband. My other question is, so if we have this money and we need, let's say, um, infrastructure work done in a particular area to stop flooding in the neighborhood, can that money be used for this particular area? To stop the flooding or to clean the storm drains and blow them out? Or is this money that's been allocated from the ninety-nine million dollar bond proposal? I just wanna know, when you talk about A R F, American Recovery Fund, is it just specific to these things that the city wants to do? Or is it specific to the COVID-related things? And can you mix those funds with what you're already using for the sewer, water, and infrastructure projects? And I'm not sure how much time I have left, but I'm looking at the sheet there and it says, question and answers, questions and comments. So if you can comment to my questions, I would greatly appreciate it. And the last thing I wanted to add, you know, we've been meeting via, um, WebEx or Zoom or whatever you wanna call it, or audio for over a year and a half. And I don't know if it's just the faulty equipment-
Your, your time is up, Ms. Gerald. I'm sorry.
Could I have at least finished my sentence?
Go right ahead.
My goodness gracious. All I wanna say is whoever is giving, giving all the distortion when we can't hear you, you need to fix your equipment because the equipment is so bad to the point that it's making people sound as if they're like inebriated. It, it's just so bad. The audio is so bad. So if you could fix that, so we don't have to deal with that, would be greatly appreciated. We're just missing out when we can't hear you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else?
It doesn't appear to be anyone else, Madam President, unless we have. Everyone's unmuted. We have anyone else? So.
Okay, all right. Uh, I will, uh, ask council if they have any comments for tonight. This is again just for discussion. It was more for public, uh, input. Uh, and then, uh, Terry will, uh, ask you to answer any, uh, questions or comments made that you would like to respond to tonight. But I'll go through council first if we can. And I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I would like to thank the planning, um, department and the other team members, um, for putting this together. The report that was submitted to council was, um, I thought excellent, very well presented, easy to understand. Um, I went back and read through it several times. Um, Terry, ca- um, within that report, didn't the planning commission also make recommendations as to, um, those areas that were the most important? We've been awarded nine point eight million. There's twenty-three um, million dollars that were requested. The, within that report, there was, um, like, one through whatever, um, as far as a priority and non-priority, correct?
Um, the, the scoring, um-
Scoring, yes.
Referring to actually came out of our, um, our web input where we had over a hundred um, residents and others, um, score priorities based on the eligible categories. That was, um, put in a matrix so you could see where the priorities were coming from the public.
Thank you, because I-
Yeah, if the planning commission did not try to narrow down twenty-three point so million down to nine point eight, they, they broadly accepted most of the recommendations from, um, the departments. There were some categories that they didn't think should score higher than others, especially because the need was so great. But because this was more, more of the public input portions yet, they didn't drill down, um, in, into making specific recommendations at this time.
Okay, because I think the scoring also, um, I was impressed as far as priority. Um, I will say I was a little disappointed with some of the comments and requests from some of the departments. And I will say I'm glad they were on the bottom of the list. And maybe this is something that during the budget session, they should consider and put in their budget because I truly do not feel that, um, this is a proper use of these funds. Um.
Yeah, just to be fair, uh, Mr. Zorn did try to, um, ask departments to refer to their capital improvement on plans and, and their wish lists from there and then try to match them up with eligible uses. Uh, so that, that was one thing. And the other, the other thing is, this is new to all of us. So we didn't have a, a template to work from.
Okay.
And, and so the variety of, um, level of effort in, in responding from one department to the next just kind of varies. And if, if we were to do this again, we would, you know, we could take some of the, the best practices and create a template. So, um, there, there was, I think, without, without picking on any particular department or request, there was a few that I, I, I think you're alluding to that the commission didn't feel should be, you know, given the greatest priority. And I, I think, um, the, the stronger projects will float to the top during-
No, yes. Thank you. I mean, personally, I was a little embarrassed to see it and also disappointed. But, um, overall, I mean, i- it was an excellent, excellent report and thank you very, very much, um, for putting it together. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Brightwell?
Um, obviously, it was a very good report. But my, my touchstone with respect to money that's coming to the city to be used by the city is our comprehensive need assessment that we paid good money for. That's a project that I pushed since my second year on council. We finally got it completed. There's a comprehensive need assessment for the city of Southfield. Now, um, are we, now, I think I, I gotten varied answers about this because I think I bring it up every opportunity I get. Are we using that comprehensive need assessment to take care of those things that are identified to be needed by the city of Southfield for the next ten to twenty years? Is this money going to be used to satisfy the, that compre- it, it's the word, it kind of self-explains to it. Comprehensive need assessment for the city of Southfield. So how is, are we using that as a template to get things done, uh, in the money that is authorized to fund the comprehensive need assessment? That's in, in a nutshell, are we using that money wisely? Because our outside consultant, we paid, uh, a couple hundred thousand, I believe, to get that project done. And if this nine million dollars coming in can knock off some of those things we need to get done, um, to do in the life of the city, uh, that's how we should pretty much run that money. We don't wanna have a, uh, a, a good wish list, uh, that people throw up. We want, we want something that is identified as a comprehensive need. Right? So.
If, if I could, Mr. Brightwell, I un- I understand where you're coming from. And again, um, there will be a steering committee that will vet this, um, properly. First and foremost, although the requests have to meet one of the five categories that are primarily COVID-nineteen mitigation efforts. And then we, I would imagine the steering committee is gonna refer to the capital improvement program as well as this comprehensive need assessment and any other professional, um, plans and studies that have been prepared when scoring and prioritizing the requests. We certainly do not have enough money to pay for all of, all of the requests. And there may be other requests from other agencies. Now, one of the questions that came up under the public comment that I, I do wanna address because we did look into it, the school district is receiving their own allocation of funding. So any, they are gonna be receiving funding to help support their eligible categories. Um, and, and our money can be focused just on municipal concerns as they relate to COVID-nineteen mitigation efforts in the broadest sense of the five categories that we discussed. So if, I would say the steering committee would strongly review the needs assessment as well as the cap improvement plan and all other reports when making a recommendation ultimately back to council on how this money should be prioritized.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And, uh, I will clearly bring this up, every opportunity I get, I will bring it up because that need assessment with a template for, for us, that, that's how to do this for the next ten to twenty years. And I think we should utilize it, they might just leave it on the shelf.
Yeah, and as I stated, there, I mean, there are other guidelines that I just gave a high-level overview. You can get reimbursed for, for expenses prior to March of this year. So there, there are some limitations on how, even for eligible uses, there's, there's some time restrictions on, on how far back you can go.
Yeah, I understand that. I just wanna make sure that, 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 that list is a, I'd see it as a to-do list for the city for the rest of, for the next foreseeable future for the city, ten to twenty years out. So, I'm, I'm good. Thanks, Terry. I, I appreciate your response. I understand it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, uh, I would just, uh, number one, just say that I totally agree with Councilman Brightwell and, uh, understanding the limitations, as Mr. Crowe just said. Uh, whatever we can do to offset some things, um, that, uh, you know, don't, that gives us more opportunity out of our own budget to do other things, then I would like to see that. And the only thing that, and I know this is preliminary, so we'll be hearing back again from everyone, so I'm not gonna be labored to point. But the one thing that I did wanna hear when it came to Parks and Rec was about creating basketball, um, uh, rims and so such, uh, throughout the city. Uh, I've been asking for, for a very long time. I think it's a great need for our city. I don't know if it falls under this or not, but I want to make sure I said it. And if it's something we can fit into, uh, that allocation for Parks and Rec, then I would greatly like to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fraser? Councilman Fraser? Okay, we'll come back. Uh, Councilman Hoskin. Oh, no, we couldn't hear you at all.
Oh.
We can hear you now.
Oh, okay. Uh, uh, Mr. Crowe? Did all of the, uh, departments respond to the questions?
No, um, the, the list of, there, I think there was about a dozen departments that, that made some requests. And I think we had like a three-week period where, and then we extended that. We, we, uh, extended it for another week or two to give everybody an opportunity to respond, but I wouldn't say all thirty-five departments responded, but at least a dozen did.
Okay, so we can, uh, assume that the ones that didn't respond are happy with what they got?
Or, or, yeah, I don't wanna assume, or they didn't have needs that fit the eligible category list.
Okay, um, the other, the other thing is, is there going to be an opportunity for the public to have more input than, and I, and, and if so, how will that take place?
Well, um, yes, the answer is yes, the public will have more opportunity. Um, again, we, we followed our similar planning process. We're a copy of the plan. The draft plan has been available for public review. We had a three-week period where public can respond, uh, through our master plan website. Was posted on the city's website as well as the planning department's website. We've held two public hearings and three study sessions to date. And, and as, as the steering committee, um, whittles down the responses, there will be additional opportunity for public input and comment on those priorities uh, long before the council, you know, makes any final decisions. As Mr. Zorn has figured, this is, this is a, a three-year window. We decided to be proactive and, and to kick this off immediately after we were notified. There are potentially additional funds coming from the state that might be, uh, eligible for us to, to use to cover more of these. But, uh, this is like the beginning of a long process, uh, to take some initial comments and there will be additional opportunity for the public to comment.
Okay, uh, the process that we're using to notify the public that they can have comments, uh, are we pretty well satisfied that it's, that it's working? Because, uh, I know there was a lot of discussion with the, uh, Beechwoods Master Plan that, uh, oh, I didn't find out about this until it was way too late. I didn't get anything on it and I don't, you know, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying, is there a, are, are we sure that we're, we have a good plan to make sure that everyone gets it rather than just put it on the internet because everyone doesn't have a computer or is uh, literate with, with a computer?
Right, I, I, I understand. And I understand, um, I thought that, you know, the Parks and Rec Department went above and beyond when you start talking about door hangers and radio ads. That all costs time and money, and we certainly can always do more. But besides the internet, on the social media, we're required to, we had two postings in the, uh, official newspaper notifying the entire public that the majority of households get for free of the public hearing held by the planning commission as well as the public hearing held, um, by council. And, and not to diminish, uh, what we've done because we are going above and beyond and we can always do more and there is plenty of opportunity. Just additively, I, I can tell you that back in the day, there were public notices in, in a meeting held where staff outnumbered the number of people that showed up in a room. When you, you can always have a statistical, you know, survey with a certain number. But when you get four hundred responses, I, I like to equate, that's the, the same as having four hundred people show up at a public hearing and each have their three minutes. And so we can always do better. But I, I believe that in this age of social media, we are reaching many more people. They have twenty-four-seven ounces to the information. They can comment on their time as opposed to a set time and date when they have to show up in a particular room to make a comment. So, uh, the answer is yes to all of those. We can do a better job. There'll be more opportunities. And we, and we can also review how we communicate. I mean, our standard is to send out to all the homeowners' associations, um, all the businesses, advertise in the paper, advertise on multiple social media events. I believe Facebook and all the, the measures that community relations uses to promote this, the mayor's newsletter. We try to hit all of those things to try to get real public input.
Okay, yeah, and, uh, I fully appreciate the fact that, uh, two or three people that talk a lot can make it sound like there's a lot more people that didn't get contacted than actually did. So. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins? Thank you, Councilman Hoskins.
Councilman Hoskins had some connection um issues, he'll be reconnecting momentarily, so you can.
Okay. Okay, uh, Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes, thank you, um, you know, this, this is a great presentation, I'm glad to see that uh, we have a lot of use. Within the city that uh, we could use, but I, I also noticed there are some things that, you know, within our facilities. That we have been looking at that weren't mentioned on these, on these uh, on the project list, for example, you know. Reconfiguring the council chambers, make that more secure, um, and you know, different, different internal things that we've been talking about for a while. Um, is there a reason those were, were left off?
Well, through the, through the chair, uh, Councilman Mandelbaum, this, this first phase was department-driven. So all departments were um notified and requested to submit. Projects based on their capital improvement plan as well as matching the eligible uses. So that, this is not exclusive to adding other eligible projects, but for example, the um, the securing of the council's study room. Is very important, but which category, you know, does it or does it not fit into, to the eligible expenses? Maybe an argument can be made that way, maybe that's something that in the course of the steering committee's review finds that. Hey, uh, this wasn't brought up at that particular time, but it is an eligible use and we can consider it. So I, I think that's all part of the process, there, there are many times when we have a public hearing and. We, we think we cover all the bases and then one resident brings up one good idea that nobody thought of and that. That, that, then we say, okay, we need to address this, so I think there'll be other opportunities to consider other projects.
Okay. Um, you know. You know, other, other than that, you know, I, I do think that this project is good, I, I like a lot of the, the ideas that we have with, with parks and rec. Um, but another, another question I have is, you know, I've been advocating for um, in our parks and rec department to. Fix what we currently have that's broken rather than embark on something new. Um, if we can't take care of what we already have, then I don't, I don't see a reason to, to start working on. Um, implementing new, either new parks or, or building new things, I think we should be focusing on um, what's broken. And I, I guess the question is, is there a way that um, through this plan to identify. And especially in the parks and rec area, what, what is something that is a repair? Or a fix versus what's something new because, like I said, if we can't. Keep, if we can't maintain what we currently have, why would we want to add on new uh, projects to the parks and rec area?
I, 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 the only, I know Ms. Fields can respond directly, but I, I'm, I'm fully aware as you are that we're going through the. Parks and Rec Master Plan process right now, so the timing is perfect. And by the time the, the plan gets adopted in January, we will have a fully vetted. Um, public input just on Parks and Rec alone, and then that could be compared to the list of requirements. I'm all for um fixing the uh pathways at Evergreen Golf Course, which, yeah, I play weekly in the city league, however. Um, you know, doing public infrastructure on wastewater and stormwater. May, may be a greater priority for the parks department than fixing the pathway, I hope the pathway gets fixed, but. When you have limited funding, you gotta look at the priorities and sometimes new things um may outweigh the repair or maintenance. And I, I only use that as an example, and but I, I think the good news is that with this uh intensive master plan. Public input session over the next two months for the parks and rec, we, we will have a very good idea. What the needs are and what the public is requesting and then compare that with eligible costs in this particular program.
Okay, I, I, I definitely appreciate that and, and, and that does make sense, you know, trying to match up the, the parks and rec master plan that we're working on now. Uh, other than that, I, I don't have any other questions, um, but I do, again, I appreciate, um. You know, the, the time and effort that your staff put into this to, to get this together, thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you again, this is an excellent presentation, the information is great. Thank you for the opportunity to hear from the uh, community because that's really what we're looking for right now. This is a public hearing for our residents and businesses and the people to speak their minds and tell us what they're looking for. So we really do appreciate this, so I, I would just ask uh Terry if you wouldn't mind just going over next steps. Because we know that this is just the beginning and we'll be hearing a lot more, but uh, could we have like our next steps?
Yeah, sure, and, and then um, if Mr. Michaels or Mr. Zorn have any comments that they would like to add. Um, you know, they, they can as well, but the way I look at it, and again, reviewing the documentation, we have about three years. I think it's really important that we finish the, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the Comprehensive Master Plan. Look at the um, community needs assessment and all the other reports before. Before we make a final recommendation back to council, that's going to take some time. And again, I, I, I can't give a, a specific time period at now, but I would imagine next spring, early summer. Uh, after this has been properly vetted by the steering committee and we've gotten input, that um, this will come back to the council. Uh, after we find out what other state and federal funding may or may not be available. Um, that this is a process, it's going to take a little bit of time to do it properly and to set those right priorities. And then it'll come back um, in a more refined recommendation so that we can take additional public comment on those eligible. Um, priorities and then ultimately, the council can, can make the decision on how to best use the funding. Um, based on the recommendations of the steering committee, which includes city administration. With that, Mr. Zorn or Mr. Michaels, if I've missed something, again, this is all new, there's eighty, a hundred pages of rules and regulations. And constantly reviewing to make sure that we're doing everything properly, we, we've been asked to really carry the, the baton. And the flag during this initial point and then we'll be handing that on to the steering committee to uh further study this item. I, I saw Mr. Zorn pop on, so I'm going to defer to him and Mr. um, Mike.
Thank, thank you, uh, Terry, Terry, uh, the presentation was well done and thank you uh for your team. Uh, to the council, I've asked uh, the planning uh department to initiate this process. Uh, the federal government was clearly looking for a planning process and our planning department does this very well. Uh, our finance director, Austin Michaels, uh, his extensive background in uh, working with uh. Federal agencies and audits, uh, he was the ideal person to spearhead our efforts regarding. Compliance with treasury rules, treasury uh, to my knowledge has put out at least four sets of rules. Austin has been on multiple meetings with the National League of Cities and other national and state agencies. As Mr. Crowe has referenced this evening, we are still waiting to see what the state and the county. Does with their various resources, I can tell you since we've started this process. We have had a request from our, uh, not just our uh employees in the treasury group, but. Uh, three of our unions, uh, collective bargaining groups, both ASME groups and Team Home have expressed. Um, uh, a request for something that recognizes the hardship. Uh, COVID has caused on their employees, similar to what uh, Livonia and Hazel Park and. Other communities in southeastern Michigan are, are doing. Uh, that request I did share with uh council in a separate uh communication last week. Uh, in addition to those requests, we've had a couple of different mental health agencies reach out. Those requests might be better vetted by Oakland County who is the state's agent when it comes to mental health. Uh, but we might be at the table uh, when it comes to supporting some of our friends in that community. Uh, in addition, uh, the Field Zone has expressed an interest in some uh modernization upgrades. In their facilities as they look to reopen, so again, we'll continue to monitor state and uh county resources. Last week I shared with the finance committee, the conversation I had with our lobbyists, uh, government consultants, uh, Bill Zagman. Uh, we are putting together a, a request of infrastructure primarily roads. Uh, Bill has indicated that uh, the legislature has a very strong appetite for roads. And our thought process is to team up with some of our other uh agencies in this, in the city, for example. The uh hospital, Providence Ascension, uh healthcare system, and that would be for JL Hudson Drive and North Park Drive. Rutland Drive, we would do a tag team with Oakland Community College, uh, looking at Central Park Boulevard, Denso Drive. With their government relations folks and Lincoln, those are roads that typically do not score well. On the uh federal uh aid, so we're, we're looking at uh, those projects. My final remarks to council is a large driver on our Parks and Rec Master Plan. Is the governor's early request that a hundred and fifty million dollars of the state's American Recovery Funds. Would be made available for local parks and rec agencies and the entry point there is an up-to-date. Parks and Rec Master Plan, the timing for Southfield was that our Parks and Rec Master Plan expires this February. So the very aggressive timeline that Terry Fields and our consulting uh at O H M. Um, have, have put together are meant to meet what we believe will be the state's deadline uh for those activities. Um, we'll continue to monitor uh both state and federal, uh, additional rules from the Department of Treasury. And we'll uh take to uh, council's comments regarding additional outreach in the next week. And we'll craft a, a more assertive schedule uh to ensure that everyone in the uh community has an opportunity to weigh in. That concludes my remarks on this topic, Madam President, thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mannion, were you going to add anything?
The mayor would like to say something.
Yep, I'm, I was going to go to you next, I just wondered if uh, Mr. Mannion had any more to add before we went to you? I don't, I don't hear anything, so go ahead, Mayor.
Uh, I would support the comments of uh council, uh, Councilman uh Brightwell and uh Mandelbaum. Uh, for instance, uh, I hear a lot from tennis players about getting the um. Existing tennis courts at the Civic Center repaired, uh repairing what, what we have rather than. Creating more infrastructure, um, the other thing that um, I would like to see. Um, would be grants for residents on uh septic. That would like to convert to a city sewer. Um, again, this would be voluntary and uh. Uh, you know, a, a window would open and close uh for uh those residents that would like to. Are currently on septic tanks and uh would like to connect the city sewer, I think this is um. It's a health issue and an environmental issue. And I think it would probably, from what I'm reading, uh, fit within the guidelines of uh these funds. Thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else that had any comments regarding the um, American Recovery Funds?
Hey, uh, this is uh Councilman Hoskins.
Yes, hi.
Hi there, uh, sorry about that, my, um, something happened to my internet here, which of course now raises. Uh, broadband infrastructure to the top of my list of priorities, um, so I, I would just, I just wanted to add. Uh, pretty much, I, I liked the discussion that we were having and I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to um. Uh, public input, what the steering uh committee uh, uh, looks at as, as far as uh, paring some of this down. Um, I would also add that, uh, at this, certainly, at least at the state level, that uh, starting this morning. They are starting to uh talk about what to do with uh the state chair uh of the recovery funds and um. Uh, as, as Mr. Zorn indicated, uh, infrastructure is, uh, is at the top uh of their priorities. And I also would like, um, uh, for Mr. Zorn, as you are putting that, that list uh, uh priorities together. Uh, if you could send that my way too, um, and I can uh work that at the uh, through our, our state senator and our. And our state representative as well, and so we can tag team with um, with big, Bill Zagman on that too, um. At the, the mayor kind of touched on this and I was just, I'm just kind of curious as far as the septic, uh, septic tanks that. If we, do we know, or how many people are on uh, uh, septic uh right now?
About a thousand. If I may, that number is estimated right around a thousand, I just asked for an update uh number uh earlier today. Originally when we started in nineteen ninety-eight with the, what was a thirty-eight million dollar investment and. Uh, what is often called the West End uh, uh sewer septic project, it was estimated at over two thousand. The irony at the time that that investment was made, we never, no one has ever given me a. Provide, been able to provide a solid, exact number, but the exercise we went through about. Uh, five years ago now, um, we, we estimated we're at about sixteen hundred. Uh, we're now in our uh second cycle of every uh se- every septic system being inspected. Every three years, uh, and that, a lot of people have connected, I'll remind people. That uh council did reduce the tap fee, which, I, I don't have the exact figures, I think we started out. We were at just around seven thousand per household, we dropped that to a flat fee of five thousand. We've established uh, a septic sewer loan program, reduced the interest rate. And for those families that are income-eligible, we have set up a uh, a uh septic. Uh, program that defers any payment till after the property is sold. I think uh, you know, where Southfield can, is, is taking a real strong position is just starting by. Making sure these systems are inspected every three years, those systems that are operating are passing. An inspection within uh, a three-year period, I think many of us have heard horror stories of. Families who bought homes during the great uh, uh recession, you know, mortgage foreclosures and that. That didn't, were not even aware that they were on septic systems, um, but. So, uh, in short, about a thousand homes, the average uh connection currently with the five thousand tap. Is just uh, around uh eleven, twelve thousand.
Okay, all right, thanks for that and, and thanks for this uh, uh, this presentation, um. Terry, I, I thank you for kind of, you know, spearheading this and um, I'm, again, I'm looking forward to seeing. Um, how this process moves along, thank you.
And, and again, if I could, just, you know, we're, we're kind of the baton carriers, but uh, all the departments and their staff. Who put the time and energy to respond also deserve, you know, um, to be recognized, so it's been truly a team effort.
Thank you very much. Uh, if there's no other comments, then we can go on to the next session. All right, our next uh is communications. Um, and I will just remind everybody that uh, we are, are. The City of Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. That no speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee or city council member. Or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee or city council member. Or elected official performs his or her duties, no person shall use abusive or threatening. Language toward any individual when addressing the city council. And any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. And any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become orderly or silent, the clerk will mute their mic if they do not stop. So with that being said, we will now open this up to communications. If you would like to be, have any comments under communication, please push star three to be recognized by the city clerk.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee. Post Office Box One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Madam President, since nineteen sixty-nine, there have been five, yes, five, five additions, count them, uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco, five additions of the Southfield City Charter, published with the outdated Chapter Seven contained within, which describes a dinosaur court system that is no longer in existence, but it still lives. It lives as a parasite in the charter by taking up to ten percent of the total contents of the current charter. And to top it off, this city charges an outrageous price, that is fifteen dollars per copy for this relic of a pamphlet. In contrast, the National Enquirer charges only four dollars and ninety-nine cents per copy. Besides the Enquirer being a lot cheaper than the charter, it is also far more accurate and also far more up to date than council's costly geriatric pamphlet. Madam Chair, what is this council's justification for publishing repeatedly five outdated editions of the city charter at an outrageous price for this pamphlet? This useless pamphlet? Madam Chair, this is all happening on your watch. Also, Madam Chair, on your charter's cover page, it states, and I quote, "This pamphlet is a reprint of the Charter of the City of Southfield, Michigan, by order of the City Council," unquote. City Council, that's you folks. Isn't that right, Madam Chair? There's no one else here to blame, is there, Madam Chair? For this obsolete, overpriced artifact that this council calls erroneously a city charter. It is about time that this city council delete Chapter Seven from your outdated charter, along with the many other outdated items, by creating a charter commission under the authority of Section Eighteen of the Home Rule City Act of nineteen oh nine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi. Well, hello again, council. This is Pamela Gerald. And I just want to keep talking to my fellow Southfield resident. You know, we've had a very good community relationship for almost forty years. And every election, we have to deal with something that's not so nice. And what I want to keep impressing upon the people in Southfield, we don't have a voter suppression problem. All I'm asking of you is that you make sure you know where you vote and make sure you know the process by which to use your absentee ballot. The other thing that I want to comment on, we have people running for office that have ran for office before. And you know where your campaign signs belong and where they do not belong. I know that I put out campaign signs, never in the right of way. And I'm noticing that there's a batch of signs that are being moved from where I personally put them into the right of way. So I want to talk to those sign grabbers, or sign robbers, or sign destroyers. All these businesses have video cameras. And at the end of the election, I'm going to call all of you out. Stop the insanity. Let these candidates run on their platform. And let's try to make it a clean race from this day forward. Leave the signs alone. They're not bothering you. You're gonna make it bad to the point where people aren't gonna want to see any campaign signs. And we're not going to give you that. So I'm asking you to stop. Leave the signs alone that I put down. All of the candidates running in this race, again, have ran for office before. If you did not ask the person that owns that vacant building, why are your signs in that spot? If you can't follow the rules from your packet that you get from the clerk's office telling you the do's and don'ts, how can we trust you to do the people's business? I have been saying for over thirty years, the citizens are at the top of the organizational chart. And any person that doesn't understand that can be voted out. Let's play fair, do it right, and make this a great election. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Madam President, I think we have one more caller, caller number five.
Hello?
Hello, good evening.
Yes, my name is Fred Bunker. I live at two four two zero one on a street that, while it had millions of dollars of improvements, there are no septic sewers. So I'd like the mayor to explain what we should do when the city spent that kind of money and didn't install any sewers available to hook our septic tanks up to. Mayor Seiver, can you comment? That's a record show. There's no, no resolve for the people who don't have public sewers, although millions have been spent to install sewers on the opposite side of the street for the non-residents who use that side of the street without paying anything for water or sewer. We're left on the side of the street that's been forgotten, except for the flooding that takes place like it does in Northwest Detroit routinely. Since sewers have been installed that rust the water, every drop that falls, like all the rain that's going to fall on Enterprise in the vacant abandoned property at Telegraph and Garner. This is a place that has been allowed to become a green space. And as part of the Rouge, original Rouge watershed, is capturing water. I'm going to enclose some photographs that show how much water will be displaced. If this property is paved over, it's all going to end up in Northwest Detroit in Dearborn Heights. Like the property that Carpenter Lake covers and the dam that could be made a little higher. But the water that gathers all flows south of Eight Mile. I wish there was positive information for the environment that would benefit those people living to the south of us. But with the council's do nothing attitude and this ongoing crisis, it's just going to get worse. I wish the mayor would tell me what to do with my septic tank and I could follow his instructions. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bunker. Madam President, no one else has pressed star three to be recognized this evening? Okay, thank you very much. Communications has now ended, so we'll go to the council. And I'll start with you, Councilman Mandelbaum.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that, as we stated this evening a few times, we are working on our citywide Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And I encourage everyone to go to the city's website or Facebook page and take that survey, fill it out. We want to know what your thoughts are for the ideas in Southfield with the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I, I also want to let everyone know, we have a couple things going on. We have our boo at the Berg, which will be taking place this week and on Friday. And it would make sense, if you want to go, please register in advance. And again, you can do that by calling the Parks and Rec Department at two four eight seven nine six four six two zero. I would like to thank the police department. Two weeks ago, they had a, a great, between the police and fire, a walk to raise awareness for domestic violence. It was very well attended. It did rain briefly, just a drizzle. And it was a very nice event. And then the following week, the Anti-Defamation League had a, a Walk Against Hate, which was also well attended and pretty much followed the same route. And it was also a great event. And it's nice that Southfield is the one hosting all of these events against hate and to raise awareness for domestic violence. And it, it shows a lot that we are the center, and we always say we're the center of it all. But the fact that we are also hosting these events shows that, you know, we can make a positive difference throughout the metro Detroit area. I also, I want to give a, a thank you to Councilman Cruz. I've been talking about building basketball courts within the city for a, for a long while. And I know he mentioned it during our speech, during our public hearing for American Recovery Funds. And I just want to thank him for jumping on that bandwagon as well. And hopefully we can get some momentum going. Other than that, have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. I would just echo what Councilman Mandelbaum just said about filling out the survey for the Parks and Rec Master Plan. It is something that, Parks and Rec is one of the things that I know that I enjoy as a resident. And we had a tremendous amount of usage of it, particularly, particularly last year during COVID. So many people got to visit our parks and really got to see some of the best that we have to offer here. And I just kind of, going on that, I, I, working with our, our state senator and our, our state representative, we were able to secure six hundred thousand dollars for improvements for, for Carpenter Lake. That was a part of our general budgeting process, not, not American Recovery Funds. And so those improvements will do a number of things, including expanding the parking lot there. It will probably add bathrooms and a number of other improvements. So people can continue to enjoy our parks, particularly that one. I just want to also just tell everybody to make sure they are staying safe as far as COVID goes. I just looked at a report, cases are going up and continuing to go up. So please make sure that you are getting vaccinated, if you haven't already. If you are eligible for the booster, please consider that as well. And I continue to get tested. I unfortunately have known a number of people who were vaccinated and had a number of breakthrough cases of COVID. So make sure you're still staying safe. We are still deep in, in a pandemic. But beyond, beyond that, that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yes, I'm actually kind of glad that you're going in, in reverse because periodically I make a, kind of when we have a free time to, to give a comment. And when I'm done and you call on my partner, Jason, he says, "Well, Mr. Frazier just took all the words out of my mouth, things I was gonna say." Well, he took the words out of my mouth of what I was gonna say about making sure you have shots for COVID. It's not going away by itself. And I, a close friend of ours lost her son, he was fifty-three years old. He insisted he wasn't gonna have his shot. And she lost him about two weeks ago. Also, I was saddened this morning when I heard on the news that we lost Colin Powell, great leader, and did a lot of good things for the country. And he's one of those people that you kind of thought was indestructible, but it just goes to prove that we all are. We, we have a lifespan. So I hope everyone has a moment of silence for Colin Powell. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Well, as Councilman Frazier just said, he took some of the words right out of my mouth. One thing I did want to say was, was to recognize the life and legacy of Colin Powell, who was just such a pivotal political figure over the years, someone who I very much admired. And wish more people in politics were like, were like him. And I do agree with Councilman Frazier that he's someone that we really want, should look to if you're gonna be in this political scenario. He, he was a man with a great integrity. And I think that's very important in politics. I also, unfortunately, sadly, on another note, I just want to, to send condolences to Mayor Kelly Garrett. For those who did not know, she lost her son last week. His funeral was on Saturday. And being a good partner of the city and friend of mine, colleague of many of us, I hope we would all just send her our prayers and blessings. Chandler, her son, he was only twenty-one years old. And he had a, a fight with sickle cell, anemia. And he may, he may have lost that fight, but he won the race. And we know he's in a better place. So I wanted to just send those well wishes out to her public and to her family. Lastly, I heard a couple people in their comments talking about Carpenter Lake. I am still waiting to hear or see something as it relates to the original plan for Carpenter Lake, as it relates to the stone monument that is, was donated to us. Getting to be rainier and cooler, those stones are gonna be slicker. And we, we know for a fact that a lot of our young people are climbing up on them, as they would, because there's no barrier, number one. And number two, is this, was this the original plan that we voted on? I'm still not clear on that part. I don't think it is. And then three, we, so that, so we got a hazard issue. We have maybe a compliance issue with the benefactor. And then thirdly, we have issue with privacy with the neighboring home to Carpenter. And then thirdly, we have issue with privacy with the neighboring home to Carpenter Lake Park that once someone was to climb on, on top of those rocks, you can just see right into their property, and that becomes an issue too. I believe that we have made promises to do something, create some type of barriers. We haven't followed through on that, and I really, I would need to see this done, and I'm going to continue to bring it up until somebody shows something to us so that we can maybe make a reassessment of what we, of what's taking place over there right now. So I know it was all in good faith, but at the same time, sometimes even in good faith, there are mistakes or there are issues around decisions we make. So, Madam President, I'd ask that you continue to help me keep this as a matter on the table and that we get some answers to this, please. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Next, we'll hear from Councilman Brightwell.
Yes, I think this has been a very enlightening session tonight, definitely with respect to the funds we received, but also with respect to Colin Powell. Obviously, I'm, I'm partial to the military, I have military life at an early age, and there, and whenever Colin Powell came to town, I made arrangements to, I was able to, fortunately, to be in the audience when he was speaking. And so, but I'm going to go back to one of my items that I brought up previously. With my veterans message, message, the VA has indicated that, you know, with COVID nineteen circulating, getting a flu shot is very important. So, and I said it last week in our last council meeting, there are over seventy thousand in-network community locations where veterans can go get a kit, a flu shot for free. The only requirement is that you are a part of VA healthcare system. So pretty much what that means is that if you have a VA, if you're part of the VA health system, you can go to CVS, Walgreens, or most, well, several urgent care places to get a flu shot. The big thing is to just call ahead and ask, are they giving a VA shot, which is free? If you have questions, if you have additional questions, feel free to call me at City Hall at two four eight seven nine six five one five zero, and I can give you further direction with respect to. The VA has a VA facility located, I'm not going to get into that over the phone, but I can give it to you right now because it's just too complicated. But with respect to everything else that's going on tonight, I'm, I'm looking forward to the city moving forward with expanding the money. I'm, I will be constantly, um, monitoring the fact that comprehensive lead assessment was produced and was done by a very good outside professional agency, consulting agency. We paid good money for it, and I want to just make sure it is used. I come out, I come out of, you know, arena where we had, we paid good money for studies, and they were put on the shelf, they were not used, and that was a joke. You know, you paid X amount, thousands of dollars, a good study, and I'm going to make sure this study is not just thrown to show and not used. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. And Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I agree with everything that my colleagues have said this evening. A few more things that I would like to add. On October thirtieth, it will be our final Household Hazardous Waste Day. The hours are from nine AM to two PM, and it will be held at the Rastock Facility located at two zero eight seven five Maple Ridge. At this time, you will be able to shred your papers. They will be accepting three boxes or up to a hundred pounds. Simple recycling items will also be accepted, as well as household hazardous waste. If you have any questions, you can always contact them at two four eight two zero eight two two seven zero. And again, this is an upcoming event on October thirtieth. I'd also like to remind everyone that in two weeks and one day, we have our upcoming city election. It will be held on November second. The mayor, council, clerk, and treasurer are on the ballot this year. If you vote absentee ballot and haven't received your ballot, please go to the city clerk's office to get one. Also, several people have contacted me because they have not received their ballot, and you can go to the city clerk's office and request another ballot, you know, if your ballot was not received. Also, the League of Women Voters, um, excuse me, sent out a questionnaire to the candidates. This was, um, the League of Women Voters put a YouTube video together on the answers, and it is available on their website. I encourage everyone to take some time to listen to the answers and the questions of all the candidates that are running. Again, you can go to the League of Women Voters website, and I believe it's also on our city cable sites. Please continue to wear your mask and stay safe. COVID is out there. It hasn't gone away yet. And my final comment is to our city administrator. Can we get an update report as to the status of when this council will receive the compensation study that they've been working on for quite a long time now for the city employees? And that's all I have to say. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. And I have nothing to add. All my comments I just ticked off as, they were already being made, so I'm not going to repeat everything, but I do echo all the comments that were already made by all of the council. I mean, they just covered everything except adding that this was Breast Cancer Awareness Month along with domestic violence. I think Councilman Mandelbaum mentioned that already. The death of Colin Powell has always already been mentioned, the Parks and Rec Master Plan input has already been mentioned, so Berg, Boo at the Berg, the recycling, so everything has already been mentioned. Please stay safe. COVID is very real. As stated several times, we lost Colin Powell due to complications from COVID nineteen earlier today. Very, very sad about that, so please wear your mask, do the social distancing, and stay safe, everyone. And yeah, that's all I'll say at this time. We'll go to, oh, I will ask that, under the administration portion, I will ask that you would respond with the update or comments on Carpenter Lake, Mr. Zorn, when we get to the administrator part, because I believe you have some information for us there. But staying in the order that we have now, Mayor, do you have any comments for us tonight?
Yes, I do, thank you. First of all, Mr. Bunker is still tuned in. Sewers don't run just on one side of the street. There is one sewer going down Garner Street. If he is interested in finding out information on how to tap into it, he should contact Tyrese Beek in the Code Enforcement Office. I would like to mention an award that one of our young people in the city of Southfield will be receiving next month. Many of you know Lauren Ballor. Michigan State University Alumni Office is going to recognize Lauren, who is currently serving as the Democracy Director for State Innovation Exchange with the Young Alumni Award at its grand, annual grand awards gala on November twelfth. The Young Alumni Award recipients include alumni under age forty who have distinguished themselves through a high level of professional accomplishment. Lauren received her BA in Social Relations from MSU's James Madison College, but her political career at state and national levels has included political strategy, civic engagement, mentorship, and service. And she was the first African-American in her role with America Votes, Southfield's youngest elected precinct delegate and the youngest appointed commissioner to Southfield's Total Living Commission. She began in fundraising and raised more than a quarter million dollars between 2013 and seventeen. In her current role, she works with state legislators, legislators nationwide to champion reforms, including identifying policy, policy areas of interest to help legislators become experts on state democracy, uh, policy such as redistricting and criminal justice reform. So wanted to give a shout out to Lauren, congratulate her on this latest honor. Thank you, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Thank you, Madam President. My first comments on the compensation study, it is still in works. We're expecting it to be near completion by the end of the year. Regarding Carpenter Lake, I've got a written statement that I'll read. The administration team, city, consisting of the city attorney, planning director, and his team, Parks and Rec Director and her team, and myself, men on site at Carpenter Lake, discussion and observations were made as it related to the current agreement with Mr. Marshall Losser. Observations were made regarding the current condition of the site and the surrounding area. Both the planning team and Parks and Recreation Team are evaluating the items included in the agreement. The team will be making recommendations addressing each item in the agreement. OHM will be following up with an inspection and elevation of the site. As a reminder, what council approved was an illustrative drawing, and so we've asked OHM to help us further evaluate that. Safety, privacy, signage, and maintenance, and the next steps will be presented at an upcoming scheduled council meeting where the agenda allows for adequate space and time for discussion. We're continuing to work out this. If council will indulge us, we'll soon finish this work up. That's all I have this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney or the Attorney's Office?
Thank you, Madam President. This is Marceline Pruitt, and we have nothing to add today.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Good evening, everyone. Just a reminder, Election Day is Tuesday, November the second. We will be open on Saturday, October the thirtieth, from seven AM to three PM for issuance of ballots. Also, there have been some delays with the United States Postal Office. If you have not received your ballot, you can go to our website. There is a link on the city clerk's website that says re-issuance of a ballot. If you filled that form out, we could give you, we can give you a new ballot, or you can come to our office daily from eight AM to five PM for a ballot. I'm encouraging everyone to drop their ballot off, as I did a little too earlier, there has been some delays with the United States Postal Office. So you'd rather be more secure with dropping it off because of those delays. And also, Election Day is November the second. All of our precincts will be open from seven AM to eight PM that day. Again, the, we'll be voting for the mayor, the city clerk, the city treasurer, and for council members. If you have any issues or any questions of where to vote, if you haven't received your ballot and you need to speak to someone, my staff would love to help you in that capacity. That phone number would be two four eight seven nine six five one five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Planner Crowe, is there any comments tonight? I don't think he's still on, okay. Our city assessor? Our city engineer? Okay, hearing from none, we have nothing to schedule. Does anyone have any other comments for this meeting tonight? Okay, hearing none, I now declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.